I'm here interviewing with Ms. Laura Mahan Williamson, running for Clark County Commissioner, District Two. However, the important thing to know is that the whole county can vote for you, not just District Two, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So Ms. Mahan Williamson, if you could start out, what are your best qualifications for the position and what's your primary motivation for running for the position?
Well, I'll go with motivation first. Motivation was the, just every time you turn on the news, there was more corruption, there was more contracts being signed behind closed doors that affect everybody, that affect me, my neighbors, you know, especially public service arena with the EMS situation. My husband is in the public service arena. He is a firefighter, you know, that's no big secret. But we do have a scanner in the house and I do notice the call times and how long the response time. And speaking with other people in other departments, I would realize how long that response time was. But yeah, just the mere corruption. Now, qualifications, I mean, I own my own business, was in healthcare for years as a human resources director, manager. A lot of my experience is in management. So I've learned how to, you know, run teams for a common goal. Also, in human resources, I was also payroll. I ran a $2 million a year payroll, would make sure it was balanced to the penny at the end of the year. Running my own small business, which is just a couple of rental houses, when I got out of working for someone else and decided to work on my own, I've learned the process of getting bids, getting work done, quality work, still paying a reasonable price, but not cutting corners and then having to replace something after a short period also. I think that's a big thing. When, when someone says something is way too expensive, but if you cut corners and do things cheaply, then you're really not getting the best bang for your buck. So I'm an all around person and I truly care. So I think that empathy has a lot to do with public service for the greater good is, you know, I'm not in this to make deals to line my own pockets. At my age, and I'm 58, that's no big secret either. Probably look a lot older than that, but you're not going to see any Botox here. Always joke about that. But you know, I just have what I need. I don't need anything else. I don't need, you know, to make a name for myself by doing things for favors for other people that aren't on the up and up. I mean, that's just not the kind of person I am.
If you could summarize in a nutshell, what do you hope to accomplish during your term, if elected?
Well, when I started out, I wanted to get into a countywide service as far as EMS. I realized that very soon after I threw my name in the hat, that we have a lot more problems than just that. We have zoning issues, we have drainage issues, we have issues with, I mean, people that are on boards that are making decisions that were appointed by people as favors. When you, when you look at the big picture, there's somebody sitting on the board that either directly or indirectly can profit from that position that they're in. And that is a huge disservice to the citizens of our county. I mean, it's just for me as a taxpayer, for my neighbor as a taxpayer, for my whole family who lives in Clark County, all my friends with the majority in Clark County. I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous how these positions have gotten dulled out to people. And over a period of time, I know that a lot of people said something about layering. Well, I'm finding out real fast what that means. You know, you've got one person in elected position, they're appointing their buddy to a board, who appoints their wife to do something else, who in turn is profiting from, you know, several deals that are made, zoning, development, none of it seems to be infrastructure, because that seems to always come last. So that's a lot of the reasons why, I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot of work to do. There's a lot of work to do. I mean, I'm willing to give my best shot, you know. But yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot.
How would you do things differently than those who currently serve in this position?
The first thing, first and foremost, I would be available. I would be available to answer questions. I mean, questions, emails, you know, I would, if the newspaper came to me and asked me for a comment about something that has happened in the county, or what's going on with this, I would not say no comment. I might go on camera and say, well, I'm not sure about that, but I'll find out. You know, if I don't know something and I'm not familiar with something, I want to go learn about it. I've always told my kids and I've told everybody else, is that the day you stop learning is the day you stop living. You should learn something every single day about something that you don't know anything about. And it's surprising how much you'll find out that you know. But I think that's the A number one, you need to be accessible to the people who put you in the office, that you, that you ran for and that you're, if you're lucky enough to be elected and be in that position, you owe them at least answers when they have questions. You know, it might not be the answer they want, you know. And I'm, with my previous experience in management and human resources, there's rules that are there in place for a reason. And sometimes you have to explain that, put it in black and white also, give it to them. And you know, this is, I'm sorry, you know, it's not exactly what I want to do, you know, like if I had to write somebody up or make a change with something. But it's because there's rules put in place for that. So that's a main thing that I see as a problem, is communication. Communication with our elected officials is a big thing. You know, I think every appointment needs to be looked at. I think every position needs to be looked at. I think salaries need to be looked at. Is there disparaging differences in salaries, which I used to deal with salaries all the time. That goes back to the, you know, you really don't, I really at first didn't think how much human resources can relate to those positions. But you do have a bunch of employees that are actually in departments that are under you, that I've actually been approached by a couple about salaries and how, you know, some people doing similar jobs seem to not have the same type. So I think that's something that needs to be looked at, things to be looked at across the board, you know. I mean, like I said, the appointments, salaries, how much we're paying on contracts, what contracts are coming up for renewal, what we're not gonna, I don't know if we have anything that's auto renewed, or you know, things that might not be good deals that we've gotten into in the past that need to be relooked at. You know, if somebody's not meeting a contractual obligation, such as runtimes, for example, response times, that needs to be looked at instead of just, oh, well, it seems like they're doing a good job. Okay, let's just, you know, we need to look at all that. We need to shake the tree and see what, you know, kind of comes from that.
You would be one vote and only one of three commissioners, but would you be willing to commit to full transparency to your constituents? For example, will you support video recorded streamed meetings, including administrative meetings or any meeting outside of executive session, making all minutes, contracts, ordinances, and resolutions available on the county website, and ensure distribution of packets of documents that support upcoming topics to be voted on ahead of the meeting, so that constituents can engage and participate in decisions?
Absolutely. And as soon as putting them, as soon as they're available to put out, like the packets, the agendas, that needs to go out. I've noticed, and I don't want to pick on any particular entity, I've been to a lot of meetings, I've been to a lot of different towns, cities, things like that. And those packets, they should be, or the agendas need to be available, I would say a good week in advance. That gives people time to plan to be at these meetings. It seems to me that sometimes agendas are not put out unless they're asked for. They're put out at the last minute. Things that are on the agenda, you know, get tabled before they're even brought up in that meeting, you know. So there's a lot of things, full transparency, absolutely. I don't think we should be having any meetings that the public's not involved in, except for executives. I mean, nobody wants to sit there for an hour to see a couple of people banter back and forth about, well, this is too much, or that's too much. You know, I get that. But sitting in a lot of these meetings and sitting next to people who are just now going, who are just now getting involved in their life, they'll look over at me and they'll say, doesn't that seem like they've already made up their mind before they got here? Why are they even voting? So yeah, transparency is a big thing.
Okay. Currently, public comments are constrained to three minutes each, and we're told that the commissioners do not need to respond or answer questions, although some members volunteer to do so. Would you be in favor of increasing the three-minute limit for any reason, depending on the scenario, and answering questions during public comment?
I think you do need to limit, have a limit of some kind. If there's only a couple of people that are going to talk, you know, they could go over, I would think that they could go over the three minutes. That's not, now, if you've got 20 people signed up, you know, the 20th person on that list is not going to want to sit there until midnight while somebody else is taking, you know, 30 minutes. So I think limits are good as far as that. Now, I don't necessarily understand why somebody doesn't want to comment that's on that board. If somebody asks a question, they're not getting an answer if you don't give them one. I mean, they're not even putting out, you know, like minutes from the last meeting, so and so had this question, there's the answer. I mean, there's like no answer. So I mean, are we discouraging people from asking questions if we don't answer? Do they think they'll stop asking questions if we don't answer? I don't think so. So I think you're gonna find, for me, that I'm not a polished politician by any means. So in my answers and my strange sense of humor, but people that take the time out of their schedule, away from their families, or even with their families, I've seen them with babies strapped on their chest, and they're asking valid questions. And it's just like, okay, thanks for your comment. No, I'm sorry, that wasn't a comment, that's a question. Are you not going to answer that? And there's a groan across the crowd. So you have to be, if you're on that board, or you're on that commission, or you're on that council, and you're looking out over these people, and you hear them moaning and groaning, and you hear them laugh when you don't answer them, then what are you doing there? What are you doing there?
Hey, how are you going to ensure the public gets the opportunity to express their desires on a particular agenda item? How will you communicate with those you represent?
I would like to form citizen boards. I don't know if that's done, has been done in the past or not. I don't know if anybody's even tried it. But I've had several people come up to me with the same kind of issues, and I would love to get some kind of, and I know this is going to eat into people's schedule even more, and that might be a scheduling problem. For some people, and I'm willing to try it, at least, and see, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. You know, I couldn't say I didn't try. But I would love to see people from different, like, if you have two people that support one issue, two people that don't, and then two people that are more neutral, or that are experts in the field, all come together and discuss that and come to a common solution. And then see, as commissioner, from where I could take that, you know, is it affordable? Is it something we even have the resources for? Is it something we have the manpower for? Is it something that there's really a need, or if it's just a couple, you know, a couple of off things that can be fixed really easy? So I would love to do some citizen boards. I was on a board that they recommended in Floyd County at one time. It was 30 something years ago. And it was called Welfare to Work Board. And they were talking about public housing. And I said, the problem with public housing is that you get these single mothers, you get disabled, you get people who, you know, they're, they're struggling. They get into public housing, and they get a job, and you're cheering them on, and they make more money, and then you raise their rent. They're stuck. Because every time they get ahead, you're bringing them right back to that, you know, you charge them a little more for rent. So then they can't save to get out. And I recommend is a program that if you're going to have a certain amount for rent, how about a percentage of that as a kind of a fund or a savings account, that kind of saves them a down payment on something else. So when you sign a contract, I'm coming into this housing authority, this is what I expect. I'm paying this much for rent, some of it's going to this account, I'm going to participate in these credit recovery account or programs. And then by the time of three years or five years, I'm ready to buy my own house, and you're out of public housing. So then the next person can come along and learn. And hopefully, that person is out, they're on their own, they're a homeowner, they know what it takes to, to be, you know, successful. Not very many people will come up to you and say, oh, well, my life's goal is I want to fail. Nobody really wants to fail, you know. I mean, but sometimes you get into those positions where it seems like you just, you're working and working and working, and you're just not getting anywhere. And that was one of those. But they looked at me like I had three heads. So but some ideas, you know.
You've had some time to study the role and responsibilities of this position. Have you familiarized yourself with past minutes, budgets, contracts, ordinances, resolutions, and policies for the position you're running for?
I've been looking over 12 years of meeting notes. And then there's something, I'll look over them for a while, and then I get overwhelmed, because I'm just like, wow, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot, there's a lot of things that I wasn't exactly sure where the, somebody said something about a road from River Ridge, I did see those in the minute notes from years ago. I need to do some more research on that, though. But I have been watching, you know, what, I looked over, I went and downloaded all 12 years of minutes in my computer. I'm surprised my computer's even running right now. But I've been kind of slowly going over them, seeing what decisions were made, seeing what got tabled, seeing what was put off. A lot of the things I've noticed, people have actually brought to me, for me to look into. You know, they'll say, well, we approached the commissioners on this, and they turned us down, saying they didn't have any money. And they'd be asking for $500. So I'm like, okay. But then I've been, and I've flipped through, and I've seen some decisions that somebody was given lots of money, that shouldn't have been given lots of money in the first place, that should have had their own funds from things that they weren't reporting. So, you know, I mean, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot, there's a lot to look into, there's a lot to research. And, you know, I've been trying to look into every single thing that I can, because there's a lot of things like with a wall at the landfill, you know, and there's bonds, and they're signing off on these bonds. And it doesn't seem like there's, you know, there's fixes that need to be made, and improvements need to be made. But it's like, I notice, there's a lot of kicking the can. We kick the can down the road. It's like, oh, well, let's put a Band-Aid on this. Well, once you keep putting a Band-Aid over something that keeps bleeding, eventually, you're going to bleed to death. So, you know, you need to have a bigger fix on some of those things. And are they going to be cheap? No. Countywide EMS service? No, that's not going to be, it's not going to be cheap. But what does it cost us in the long run? You know, I mean, they had to go back to several, several cities and request more money to pay New Chapel. So what is a contracted rate if we're not getting a contracted service for the contracted amount? As I said, there's a lot of contracts also that I need to go over. And I did take a little business law in school. So.
I know you have. But have you and will you attend other county and/or local government meetings while in office to keep informed on planning, future growth, current issues, and a general overall perspective on what other elected officials are doing that affect your decision-making process?
Absolutely, absolutely. I noticed that there was zoning decisions that they were talking about before they even had, I was at another meeting and just happened to pick up on somebody, and had a discussion about, they were on a water board. And I asked about a development that they were talking about voting on, and they said, well, they haven't come to us at the water board, and they're supposed to do that first. What? What? So yes, yeah, I think that's the best way to find out things, is when you go to meetings, you'll hear discussions behind you sometimes, and you'll pick up on stuff that is like, what? You know, the main problem, and a lot of people that I talked to, they laugh about it, because they tease me about it, and you've probably already noticed it. I don't have a poker face. If somebody sitting two chairs down from me says something, it says it all. I just, you know.
You are who you are.
I am, I am. Take me or leave me. That's, you know, and that's, I've been able to relate with a lot of people, and across party lines, because they're not what, and a lot of people get a fixture in their mind of what typical person of a said party should be, or what they're like. I'm not like that, by any means. I was raised out in the country, I learned how to use a gun when I was a kid, I drank way before I was supposed to, because at my grandma's, you know, you can, you know, you want a little sip of beer, you got to learn how to play uke right. Well, what's the first thing you do? You learn how to play uke right. You know, so, I mean, I've been known to cuss like a sailor, you know. If I see PS, I'm gonna call it out. You know, some people are not gonna like me. But, you know.
Okay, now, these are some specific questions. The following questions are ones that we feel are important to voters in Clark County right now. Do you have any relatives, close friends, or business partners serving in a government position, on a government board, as an elected official, in building, development, or real estate?
Close friends or relatives? No. No, I don't have any, no. I have a couple of friends, but I've met them through the party, that are now elected officials. But as far as, you know, as hanging out on the weekend and doing deals and stuff, no.
And that's where we're going with that, obviously.
I know exactly where you're going. In my evening news questionnaire, I had to send it, they ask if I had any connections to that, you know, any deals, any blah, blah, blah. And my two-word answer was absolutely not, and it was all in capital letters, because I've had nothing to do with him, I've had nothing to do, the only interaction I've ever had was walking out of the chicken house one day, and my car happened to be sitting next to his car, and he said, you want to race? And I looked at him and said, oh, for you to arrest me? No, thank you.
All right. Outside of county administrative powers, commissioners can sit on various committees and boards. What is your view on industrial solar projects being placed on agricultural land in Clark County?
I've been doing a lot of research on this, because it was not even in my wheelhouse when I put my name in the hat. And I really don't have a set position exactly. I don't like the idea. I understand different areas. I've done some research, I've asked about rooftop solar for these big factories. A lot of places have said that's where they put their HVAC, it would take a lot of money to fortify and put that stuff on top. And then I asked, well, can't you put it in the parking lot? And they were like, have you ever seen a lamp hole in a parking lot? People hit it all the time with their cars. Well, you know, that made sense. You know, I've had some say, well, you could put it on farmland, and you could grow things underneath of it, you could still have crops, you could still, you know. But when I ask, where's the research? Well, then I'll get research. But then I'll get research from the others that say, well, this is contrary to that. So that's kind of one of those things, is it's, I understand the deal, I understand property values, I understand, you know, if somebody, and that's where zoning really is a thing that I'm most conflicted with, when somebody comes and would come in front of me and say, hey, I want to put a junkyard here. Well, where are we putting a junkyard? Are we putting it, you know, next to people? You know, it's kind of one of those things where, you know, but then in a way, I mean, a property owner, that's their property. I mean, how much can I tell them what they can do with that? I can with any, in reason. So if we set guidelines, say, somebody wants to put some solar on their land, how much solar are we talking about? Are we talking about a disruption to, you know, that whole area? Are we talking about a few panels in the center of your land that nobody else is going to see? What, you know, so I mean, there's a lot of things to take into consideration. I'm not in bed with the solar people, you know, the solar companies. I'm not really in bed with anybody, other than my cat will get up there, my dog, you know, they kind of push my husband out from time to time. So, you know, I'm really, I don't have, I don't have 200 acres either that I have a dog in the fight. You know what I'm saying? So I mean, I would want to hear both sides, and then go from there on, well, what's the concerns? And then from the solar place, well, do you have data to back this up? Where is this coming from? I've had union people come to me, though, and say, hey, these are union jobs, we're making solar panels here. You know, there's a solar panel place in Indiana. So I mean, I've, I've been approached by both sides, you know, and I'm kind of like, well, I'd have, I would say it's case by case. I mean, if we start getting too much in an area, though, that's, we don't want that either. We don't want too much of one thing. It's just like development. You know, I mean, say your neighbor has 200 acres, and they say, well, I want to put solar here. Well, if I don't want solar there, then I'm saying, I'm going to go and say, well, I don't want solar there. But then they say, okay, well, then I want to put 2,000 houses there. And then, and then you're like, wait a minute, you know, am I going to have 4,000 more cars on my street? Or am I going to have, you know, some solar panels? Or hey, let's just put a cemetery, and then we don't have to worry about anybody, you know. You know, I think it would be more on a case-by-case basis. I would have to have input, I would have to have the research and the data. So I'm coming in fresh, I'm not coming in with, with one side or the other, you know, and I've heard arguments for both. So, you know, that's like I said, it would have to be a case-by-case. It's kind of like the zoning that's already going through in Memphis. You know, I mean, they're keeping it rule two, but, or rule, they're keeping that one particular thing, but they're still going to have, what, 600 houses? That's a lot. That's a lot on a narrow, windy road. I went out there and drove that road, just to find out exactly where it's at, went out and talked to the neighbors. And actually, there was a guy that lived like two houses away from it. He was like, what are you talking about? I don't know anything. I said, it's a white sign down there. White sign? That's another problem. There's not enough people knowing what's going on. When they put those itty-bitty signs, and you can't even read them, the dates are faded, there's not, that's an issue. I've noticed that, too. So.
Along those same lines, what is your view on the current Clark County Comprehensive Plan and developing and rezoning agricultural land here in Clark County? How can we balance development with maintaining agricultural land responsibly?
You know, that's a very good question. And, and, you know, I know, I could, I could speak from my own experience. I live in a neighborhood that's on my grandma's farm. The reason that neighborhood is on my grandma's farm was from a family dispute. Luckily, I was not involved in that. But that half of the farm got sold off, because two of the family members tried to keep it in the family by bidding on it. But you can't, you can't outbid these developers who come in with all this money. You just can't. The family farms are going away. The family farms are going away for things like development, and neighborhoods and things like that. Do we need more neighborhoods? Are the ones we have full? You know, I mean, that's something to look at, too. I mean, if you pull up Realtor.com, I mean, there's a million houses on there, and it changes every day. There's four or five more, and you know, I'm in the middle of selling a little house here in New Albany. But I mean, it just, I would definitely have to, to, I want to get with Purdue, probably, and IU on the studies of agriculture in our state. My son has actually talked about agriculture, and he's, and I was like, do you want to be a farmer? Because my grandparents are farmers, and I know how hard that is. I used to have, I had to help bale hay and do all that stuff. And I, I just laughed to my son. I said, the first time you got to muck out a stall, man. Come back and tell me what you want to do. But, you know, I mean, I think we need to do everything we can to keep farmland from being swallowed up by development, by industry, by, you know, quite frankly, I mean, somebody, a young person these days, if they wanted to buy a farm, and I've talked to a couple in the, in, they're farmers, but they're on a small scale. We don't have the land that you can afford to be, to put 100 acres in corn. To be, to put a hundred acres in corn. Soybeans, things like that. Because if you wanna buy a hundred or so acres, you're looking at a million plus. Because I've seen some of those real estate prices. For that. And, and that's priced mainly to put. Neighborhoods in. I mean, that'd be the only thing you could do for a million and a half dollars. You know, I mean, you can't come in as somebody who wants to, because not only do you have the price of the land. Then you have the price of the equipment. And one of those combines, a tractor. I mean, heck, a lawnmower, a lawnmower costs a fortune anymore. So, I mean. Um, I don't know, as far as, I would like to study more on agriculture. Uh, as far as like 4H and all, also to get with them and get statistics on uh family farms. And uh, but I know there's a lot of family farms that are being swallowed up because the next generations don't, they. They don't wanna be in that. It doesn't pay enough. You know, uh subsidies, the, they, farmers depend a lot on subsidies because of our weather. You know, sometimes their crops are good, sometimes they're not. You know, and I mean, they still have to feed their families. So, I mean, that's, that's something that, anything that I can help. Keep a rural area rural. I mean, that's where I came from, is a rural area. It's not rural anymore. It's not rural. It takes me forever to get out of my, out of my street. Out, out of, I mean, we're swallowed up in Solersburg. I mean, it's just. You know, it takes me forever to get down sixty, to get down one eleven, to get down Charlestown Road. To get up four oh three if I'm going to Charlestown. I mean, it's just the traffic is, uh, is a nightmare. I don't even know how to start to. That's another issue, but I don't even know how to start to handle that.
River Ridge Development Authority is a quasi-governmental body who is able to bring companies into the area. And conduct business without citizen input or knowledge until contracts are signed. Uh, and as an urban enterprise zone and TIF district, they also retain generated tax income. And revenue that does not go back into the community like a standard district. Do you believe there should be more continuity between River Ridge Development Authority and Clark County Government? And will you attend River Ridge Board meetings, give input, and seek property tax revenue from River Ridge to fund needed infrastructure improvements?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I haven't studied a lot on River Ridge yet. I've asked a few questions about it. Um, I've seen where they brought in new business. Uh, they get. Uh, I guess you would call it a tax abatement maybe, uh, but I also think that they pay into other things. So I need to find out exactly what that is. But I think, you know, I. If, if we're wheeling and dealing on bringing companies in, you know, they need to help us pay for public services also. Roads. Schools. Public service, fire, EMS, you know, um. So I think that's a discussion that, that, oh yeah, I would attend. I would attend every meeting they would have me at. Now, if they're gonna throw me out, then.
Well, they are open to the public, so you should not be thrown out.
Well, I don't know. Sometimes I'm the rowdy one in the back of the room. It's whether they're gonna put the rowdy one in the front of the room.
Okay, as a commissioner, you will not be a full-time employee of the county, but you will be offered full medical insurance benefits. Some constituents are not okay with paying for this benefit to less than full-time employees and others are okay with it. What's your position on this topic and will you be taking county insurance?
Well, I didn't know that I get the county insurance. So, I mean. I have insurance. Have it through my husband's em- employer. Now, if he finds out I get insurance, he might retire though. Don't tell him. I mean, is that a choice? I mean, does it automatically come with a position? Is it something you could sign saying I don't want it? And does that really save a, a whole lot of money? Like if I, if. I put it down as my insurance would, I guess it would make the county insurance primary. And my husband secondary, so. Yeah. Um, would I turn it down? I mean, if people didn't want me to take it. But I mean, if they're paying for it, you know. You know. I don't even know what the position pays.
I don't know the exact dollar amount, but I think that it's around twenty-five thousand. I don't know if there's gonna be increases, but.
I didn't get into it to get rich for any means.
Obviously.
I know, I didn't even ask about that. I didn't even know it came with insurance. So, you know, I was more focused on the issues. Than if there was any perks to it because I figured, I knew it was part-time or they call it part-time. I would probably make it more of a full-time job because I would be going to the other things because. You know, just showing up for a one-hour meeting and not answering anybody's questions, that's not worth, even if you're making ten thousand dollars a year, you're not making. You know, you're not earning your paycheck. So, I would definitely. Be attending meetings. I would be available to answer questions. Uh, I've had people call me and, and they were, I actually had somebody call me yesterday and they're like, oh my gosh, you answered the phone. And I was like, well, it rang. You know, I mean, uh, if the phone rings, you're supposed to answer it. You know, if you can't answer it at the time, you should call them back. That's common courtesy. That is. Being polite. That's being a decent human being. So, you know, I mean. If that's a job qualification, then hopefully I can fulfill that one in office.
Switching over to the landfill. The current landfill is nearing capacity with a series of expansions over decades. Residents complain of foul odors, traffic, wastewater concerns, a lack of accountability and oversight. And the lack of planning for rapid growth, especially with River Ridge in Clark County. Have you looked at plans and funds for closure and post-closure? And what are your thoughts on solutions for handling landfill needs?
Well, I know the landfill is a problem and I did see that over the, the meeting notes that I was looking at. My mom lives in Floyd County and it's a problem for her because those trucks are coming down that road to go to the landfill and. They're spreading garbage all over the place because things aren't covered. There is, the landfill is an issue. Um. I know that there's probably a board there that we're appointed by people. And that needs to be looked into. It needs to be looked into of why we keep putting a Band-Aid fix on something that. Is not getting any better. Why do we have a recycling program when people keep asking me? Where do we take our recycles? How come they don't come to my door and get my recycles? Are we really recycling? We take our things out there to a recycling area at the landfill that are supposed to be recycled. And now I've had somebody tell me, well, they just throw it in the dump anyway. What? You know, I mean, people will recycle if they know that it's gonna help the, the, the area. I mean, we have this huge landfill. And if we offer them curbside recycl- recycling. Then. More often than not, they're going to recycle. A lot of people will, you know, even if they just put one thing in there, even if they put all their tin cans in there. Or even if, that's that much less that goes to the landfill. So. There, there's, yeah, there's some solutions maybe to the problem, but I know one thing. If we don't fix what's going on out there. And we keep putting a Band-Aid, that's another Band-Aid issue that's, that's becoming an artery that is spewing. Uh, you know, if something's gonna happen, somebody's gonna come in and shut it down. There's been sewage plants. Across the country that you'll see, all of a sudden, somebody's shut a sewage, the EPA's come in. You know, it's leaching stuff off into the water. It's doing this, it's doing that. Well, then they shut it down. Then what's gonna happen? They shut us down. What are we gonna do? We gotta put our trash somewhere. So then we're paying to haul it off. To somewhere else that we're paying double for or triple for. It's kind of like, right now, we have a Band-Aid fixer EMS. We're paying that much more money per month. So, I mean, we've got a lot of these major league issues that need to be fixed and we need some people that. You know, are committed to fix it. And then bringing in experts or. You know, getting people on these boards to make these decisions, to make that stuff happen. And now.
Clark County has a history of contract EMS services. Due to the current EMS scandals, we have another temporary EMS contract in place. The EMS committee has been discussing a county-based municipal and/or firebase solution to our EMS deficits for years. What's your position on continuing EMS contracts versus transitioning to a government-run solution?
We need to transfer to a, or we need to, we need to go to a government run. We just, we just do. I mean, we have the history. Look at our history. From, from. I could, even before. This latest one, we had issues before. And issues before that, and issues before that. And it's not that I'm against the fire department and firebase because good grief, I mean. I'm in a fire household, you know, so I'm not against that. But the problem with that is, and I've had people come to me and say, oh, well, we're going to firebase. And, and I'm like, but I, if I'm a commissioner, I have to worry about our people who aren't in those areas. The majority of the runs, the EMS runs are in Jeff and Clarksville. That's the majority. Then you have the outline areas. Just because you live in Marysville, just because you live in Borden, just because you live in Otisco. That doesn't mean. That you're any less of a taxpayer in our county. As someone who lives in downtown Jeff. Somebody who lives in Solersburg, somebody who lives in Charlestown. You know, you pay your taxes just as well as the next person does. And we need to provide a quality service countywide. County employees, union-based jobs, decent pay, might not be the top that you can earn in the area. But we would have benefits to come along with it. And what better benefits can you have? Even pay into the state. Retirement plan. I'd also like to work alongside of Prosser. Ivy Tech. Our own. You know. Training program. I mean, we've got kids that come out of Prosser. Every year, and they're already got their EMT. So, and a lot of people have said, well, you can't let them drive the ambulance until they're a certain age. Well, I would think if you have a county-wide service, you might be able to, to. Get insurance coverage for these people, put them through driver's training, put them through whatever you need to get those people in those positions. But if we offer training and then we have the little, the little firehouses that we can. You know, we, we can have a central location for office and billing and things like that. Cause just because we have a county-wide service, doesn't mean we can't bill people's insurance. Because if we go pick up somebody that's got Medicare or Medicaid or whatever, private insurance, we can still bill for that ambulance, ambulance run. Now, you're gonna have your people that don't have ambulance or that don't have insurance. You're gonna have those people that Medicaid's not gonna pay as much as private insurance. You know, so your reimbursement's gonna be different. I worked in healthcare for a million years. I know reimbursement rates. I know what billing issues are. So. But. I think countywide is the only way to go. Uh, I've talked to, to Greenup County. I've talked to, to Harrison County. There's different options that we can do. We're gonna have to have some kind of hybrid system to get off the ground. We're not gonna be able to just, you know, day one, say, okay, here's our staff, here's our ambulances and, you know, I, I'm realistic. I know that. Uh, I know how much ambulance. Ambulance does cost. I know how long it takes. If I ordered one today, it might be a year or so before I even get one. So we're gonna have to start out, you know. Um. We also need to find out. What kind of equipment the county owns? What have we paid for that's unaccounted for? What ambulances are, are out there? Did we buy any of those? Did we buy any of the equipment? Who knows? I think we're, I think some places are still missing a front truck.
Okay, now this is my last question, then I'll turn it over to you for anything else you wanna say. Property taxes seem to be increasing for most property owners in Clark County significantly for many. The commissioners and council work together to set the county budget. Some local representatives allege that they have no control over property taxes. What's your view on the role that commissioners play in property taxes and will you have any power to make a difference in this area?
As far as property taxes, property taxes are pretty much the, the. They're set at a state, at the state level. Now, I do know that at a local level, um. I'm under the understanding that properties need to be assessed like at least once every five years. There are counties such as ours that will assess property more than that. Uh. Like I said, I have a couple of little rental places. I have a couple of, I have had a total of four now, I have three. Um, but the. Taxes have. Just, uh, it's at least double in Clark County than it is in Floyd, cause I own a couple of properties in Floyd. So I've been questioning that. Why is this, you know, I don't go to Floyd and say, hey, how come my taxes aren't as high as they are over there? Cause you know, I don't want them to say, oh, well, wait a minute, but. But I have found out that. It's been raised more than once over the past few years. So that's a major league problem. So, we need to get to the bottom of that now. Whether I have. Any kind of control over that, I don't know, but I'm dang. Gonna find out. I, you know, I'm gonna find out. And if I do, then, you know, we're gonna have a discussion about that. Because I don't know exactly know who makes that decision, but I do know that on a state level, the state. Has set it pretty much on what retail values are. And when we have a boom like we did. You know, we have people on fixed incomes that are being priced out of, out of their homes. I'm being priced out tax-wise out of the rental business because I'm not gonna be a rent, a landlord. Who's gonna charge exorbitant rates that people can't afford. I'd rather just sell my house to a first-time home buyer at a lower price like we're doing with this little house here in New Albany that I'm sitting in right now. Uh, to a first-time home buyer and I'm not price gouging them. I'm just, you know, walking away with what my initial investment was. And, you know, calling it a day. But, um, a- as far as having a lot to do over property taxes. I don't think that the council or the, the commissioners have. I, I mean, I think they do have some say over it, but not a whole lot. Uh, I do know that they have a lot of say over how the money's spent. So, that's an issue. But, uh, yeah, oh, definitely. I mean, I'm a property owner in Clark County. Why would not look into seeing how, if we can lower that tax rate if I can? Heck, yeah. I mean, I'd like, I'm, I'm, I'd like to benefit from that. You know, I'm gonna keep owning my property in Clark County if I can afford to stay in it.
Uh, what other topics are important to you and what else do you want voters to know? How can people learn more about you and support your campaign?
I think we've covered a lot, uh, in this interview. Uh, I mean. Personally, I mean, I got into the race, um, and I did it at the last minute. Um, I was upset about the way our county, the. Just everything in our county has gone. And I feel like, uh, that the taxpayers need a choice. And at the last minute, I put my name on the ballot. If I did not do that. The people wouldn't have a choice in my dis- or well, you know, cause my opponent would have gone unopposed. And, uh, to the voters of Clark County, I think that that's important, that we need to have a choice. Um, when people are in office for so long, I think they get complacent. They, uh, I don't wanna say they get lazy, but you know, I mean, that can tend to happen if you're in a position for so long. Um, e- even if you get into it for the right reason. Uh, I'm not getting into this to, uh, make it a career. By any means, um. I'm not. Looking at staying in a position for term after term after term. Uh, I wanna get in, I wanna make a difference. I wanna set our county on the right track. And then I wanna go fade off into the sunset on a beach somewhere. Because, uh, I'm a mom, I'm a grandma. Um. My husband is close to retirement. Um, it's nothing that I want to keep doing, you know, working forever. But I do still feel like I can make a difference. I can make a change. And I'm willing to put in the work. I'm willing to put in that work for. Uh, my friends, my family, my neighbors, my fellow Clark County citizens and residents. And we've got a lot to fix. Uh, there's a lot of work. I'm willing to do the best that I possibly can. Um. Daily, I have people reach out to me. Uh, my website is Laura. The number four commissioner dot com. At the bottom, you'll see a little tab where anybody can reach out to me. I have my emails on there. It has links to my social media. Uh, I've actually, uh, got a TikTok. Uh, I'm not, you know, I, I, I'm not real, I'm not as. Um, I guess you call it social media savvy as my seventeen-year-old son. But I do have a TikTok and he was kind of thrilled that I have more than a thousand followers. Of course, they might not be from around here, but you know. He was kind of excited about that. But, uh, it has all the links to my social media if anybody has any questions. Uh, they can reach out to me. I do, um, I pop up at a lot of different things, uh, festivals around the area. Um. There are a lot of things going on this weekend. Uh, so any type of community, uh, places that, you know. Or if anybody wants to send me a message on Facebook that they're having an event. Or if anybody wants to send me a message on Facebook that they're having an event. You know, and that they have questions or they just wanna talk to me, or I can meet somebody for, I don't drink coffee, but I can meet them at a coffee house. Uh, or, you know, and answer questions. So. I'm available and I'll be available if, uh, the residents of Clark County put me in office.
Okay, great. It has been such a pleasure interviewing with you. Thank you so much for your time.
Oh, no problem.